You're listening to Here Arizona, addressing issues empowering our community.
In the first episode of Inhospitable, we learned that humans have long lived in the land that now contains Phoenix, the Salt River Valley. But there have always been environmental challenges here, and there is even a civilizational collapse, the HOCON, which was very possibly caused by those environmental challenges. So in some ways, what we're facing today is nothing new. It's hot, just like it's always been. It's dry, just like it's always been. But in other ways, today's challenges are unprecedented. Temperatures are climbing very quickly every year, and with that has come an alarming rise in heat deaths. At the same time, our population is skyrocketing, and so there's more demand for water and energy. Of course, this is not just a Phoenix thing. It's a massive global problem. It involves all the biggest countries and businesses on earth, the world's most powerful people. But it impacts everyone, especially the least powerful people, like Michael Smith, the 64-year-old man we heard from last episode, who moved to Arizona over a decade ago to be with his mother when she died. Because of serious medical problems and a bad bike accident, he can't work.
I can't lift hardly anything anymore. I'm lucky if I can walk three or four blocks without totally, you know, being done, you know?
This year, he ran out of places to stay, and this summer, he found himself without a home, having to brave the Phoenix heat on the street. He said he's gotten heat stroke and passed out on the concrete multiple times.
Then you gotta, you gotta find a place to cool off. That's the most important. They've tried to take me to the hospital a few times, but didn't want to go.
Some people are skeptical of the very idea of Phoenix. They question how this big city can continue thriving and growing with the way the climate is changing. They suggest our civilization here could collapse under environmental pressure like the HOCON before us. Andrew Ross, an author and sociologist at New York University, is one of the most famous of these Phoenix doubters. He wrote a book in 2011 called Bird on Fire, in which he called Phoenix "the least sustainable city in the world." His main concern was how heat and drought would impact people in the city unequally. Wealthy people could afford water, air conditioning, and plenty of trees, but people like Michael would be left out on the scorching hot asphalt, fighting for their lives. In this podcast series, we want to bring you deep dives on environmental issues that highlight the stories of real people impacted by the changing climate, stories from people like Michael. But we also want to bring you conversations with people shaping the policy and organizations dedicated to solving climate problems. So every other episode will be an interview with one of these people. We'll explore what they're doing and how their life experiences led them to climate action. So for this episode, I sat down with Phoenix City Councilwoman Yasemin Insari at Here Arizona studio. She's new to politics, but a veteran with climate issues. And now, she's working to prove the Phoenix doubters wrong.
If you Google "Phoenix climate change" or "Phoenix extreme heat," you'll see pages upon pages of articles and studies that show that Phoenix could be uninhabitable by the end of the century. But I will say, I, you know, I'm very much an optimist, and there is so much great work being done, I think. But it's important to know that that is a possibility, so that we start taking actions now to make sure that we have a sustainable future here.
Yasemin Insari has dedicated her career so far to combating climate change on the world's highest level stages, at the UN and international climate conferences, as well as on the ground floor, the neighborhoods in Phoenix City Council's 7th district. These are some of the hottest neighborhoods in the hottest big city in the United States. It's where I live and where I met Michael. Insari is 29 years old. She grew up in the Phoenix area. She's a daughter of immigrants, and in April 2021, she was sworn in and became Councilwoman Yasemin Insari, the youngest woman ever to serve on the Phoenix City Council. From Here Arizona, this is Inhospitable. I'm Anthony Wallace.
So I was born in Seattle, Washington. Both of my parents are immigrants who came to the US from Iran. My parents actually decided to move to the Phoenix area in the mid-1990s, when they came out for a trip and loved the weather. My dad actually suffers from asthma, and at that time, his doctors recommended that the dry weather would be, would be good for that. So we ended up moving here.
Yeah, so kind of ironically, maybe, it was the climate that brought you here
Exactly.
in the first place.
Yeah.
Historically, that's been one of the biggest appeals of Phoenix's climate, for just comfort, like escaping the cold, but also for health reasons.
Right. You know, I always loved growing up here, but I think that my experience, you know, even in those 10, 15, 20 years since I was a kid, the threats of extreme heat have gotten significantly worse. And I just want to make sure we're doing everything we can to be prepared for that, so that, you know, kids don't have too difficult a time.
Yeah. Yeah, that's one of the things that we talked about in the first episode, is just how truly hotter it has gotten here. In the past 30 years since the 90s, the average number of 110-degree days has doubled.
Right.
So yeah, while it's always been hot here, it really is hotter now. But I wonder if you remember like a moment from your childhood where the gravity or importance of climate and how the world is changing struck you?
I think probably in elementary school, I recently actually found an essay from when I was like 10 years old, talking about ways to combat global warming and what you can do as an individual. I think it was not until later that I realized, you know, I think the problem sometimes when you're a young kid, or even how just historically people have learned about global warming, it's always this image of like the polar bears and the ice caps and things that are obviously incredibly important, but just don't resonate with an everyday person who has so many different issues and struggles to deal with. What I learned later is that dealing with climate change for, you know, is about saving lives, like human lives are at stake. Human lives have been lost to climate change and will continue to be lost. And people, you know, migration and refugee populations are caused by climate impact. So I think that's what changed from when I was a kid to now, was just recognizing that it's not about saving the planet, it's about saving lives and humans.
Yeah, I think one way that my thinking has changed is that the earth is fine, you know?
Right. The earth will be here.
Yeah. It's really about people and just the very narrow band of climate that we've like built our civilization around and can't really adjust to that changing that much.
At the end of the day, it's, we need to transform systems that we live in. We need to transform our transportation system. We need to transform the way we build new buildings. You know, it's a very, very small number of companies that are responsible for the majority of greenhouse gas emissions across the world. So I think it's, it's not at all the individuals' fault or responsibility. I think we need to change the way our society works, and then it'll be much easier for people to, you know, change their daily lives around that as well.
So you became the youngest woman ever elected to Phoenix City Council. Was that an aspiration that you had at all as a child?
I don't think I knew what the Phoenix City Council was when I was a kid. I have always been interested in policy. I think, I always say, being the daughter of two immigrants who fled, you know, a revolution meant that, growing up, dinner table conversations at my house often revolved around politics. Like, we would debate, you know, wars and issues around foreign policy especially. I got more into politics in high school in 2008. It was the first presidential election that I was really excited about, so I started volunteering on campaigns. I studied international relations in college and wanted to work in like the US administration or maybe in government. I think when I pictured a politician at that time even, you always picture like 40, 50-year-old man in a suit who has a law degree. That seemed to be the only path to get to that position. I think it was only in like the past five years where, especially in 2018, when we saw this huge wave of women, younger women, women of color, especially across the country, run for office.
Record number of women being elected to Washington.
Women, people from different ethnic backgrounds. And LGBTQ candidates are running for all levels of government across the United States. Think about that for a second.
I was like, oh, okay, like this could be possible.
Yeah, and you're talking about like dinner table conversations with your family, and earlier talking about realizing really what catastrophic climate change could look like or result in. And I wonder, understanding the reality of having to like move or like flee from a bad situation, I wonder how that presence in your life has informed you or influenced you?
Well, it's really interesting you bring that up, because in, when I was an undergrad, it was right around the time where the like entire Syrian conflict was happening. And that was an issue that I was really passionate about. I did a lot of work at refugee camps and really just actually wanted to go live abroad in the Middle East and work with refugee communities. So I won this fellowship that would mean that I could work in public service, and I was speaking with the person who later became my boss and my mentor on the phone. It was kind of an interview to maybe go work for the United Nations. And he's like, "Look, like, if you care about refugee issues, if you care about international security, climate change is the issue that you need to focus on." And I started doing so much research, and it's true, there's studies that show, you know, what happened in Syria. Of course, it's, it's a multitude of factors, but there was like an almost decade-long drought in the rural region of Syria that caused migration from the rural areas, because a lot of farmers couldn't work there anymore. They moved to the urban center. Then coupled with government mismanagement of resources and all of these different economic issues that are already happening, then you have all of these things that cause an uprising in the country. And then, you know, fast forward, and you have millions of refugees to this day who have to leave their country and still weren't able to return home. And that's just one example. We see that with flooding in different places. We see that there are, you know, small island countries around the world that are literally going underwater and may not exist in the coming decades. So yeah, so I think just that recognition that the climate crisis will inevitably lead to people having to leave their homes, and then that leads to conflict and so much more. So we're already there. It's just about doing everything we can to limit the worst of it.
Yeah. Well, it's really interesting that you kind of came to it through an interest in migration. And that might be the most poignant example of how climate change could affect people. And one thing we talked about in the previous episode was how humans have lived here in the Salt River Valley for a very long time, 12,000 years, but there's always been environmental challenges to overcome. And the HOCON, which was the largest civilization to inhabit this area, did collapse. I think it could seem very far-fetched to imagine people here having to run away, but it's, when you look at the history and look at what's happening now, it's really not that wild of an idea.
Yeah, no, it's, it's not. And there's, you know, if you, if you Google "Phoenix climate change" or "Phoenix extreme heat," you'll see pages upon pages of articles and studies that show that Phoenix could be uninhabitable by the end of the century. But I will say, I, you know, I'm very much an optimist, and there is so much great work being done. I think we're at a point where the public recognizes the urgency of climate change, not just in Arizona, but you know, across the country, across the world. We saw massive, you know, youth climate strikes and marches across the world a couple years ago that are still ongoing.
The climate strike is going to take over cities tomorrow, including right here with a march in downtown Phoenix.
Cities are changing their ways, companies are changing their ways, national governments, everyone. So I really am an optimist, but yeah, it's just, it's important to know that that is a possibility, so that we start taking actions now to make sure that we have a sustainable future here.
Can we talk about the work you got involved in after college?
Yeah, so right after college, I went and worked for former UN Secretary General Ban Ki Moon. That was in the lead-up to adopting the Paris Climate Agreement. So essentially, I worked on like a 20-person team of advisors who were helping to navigate the politics and support the Secretary General in making sure that we do everything we can to reach a climate agreement, because it was not inevitable that we would get to that point. It's a pretty big feat to get almost every country in the world to agree on anything, let alone one of the biggest challenges we face. So did that for a year and a half, learned a lot about just, just the political dynamics, you know? What is it that will encourage countries and move political leaders at that high of a level to, to want to make these commitments? And I think a big part of what it was, which is still important to this day, is showing that there is mass public support, showing that they have support from the private sector. So we had a lot of like, you know, big signing events with like CEOs, you know, coming on board to say like, "We support the Paris Agreement." Celebrities, you know, young people, indigenous leaders, all sorts of folks. So that was phenomenal. And then after that, I went on to work with the team of former California Governor Jerry Brown on the Global Climate Action Summit, which, that was during the Trump administration, when the US had pulled out of Paris. So the purpose of that summit was really to get cities, states, companies, other non-state actors to make bolder commitments on climate issues. So that, honestly, that experience is, I think, the time when I started really realizing the powers that cities held, because we, I got to work with a lot of mayors, a lot of, you know, city council members, in getting cities to sign on to different things, clean air declarations, renewable energy, a lot around electric vehicles. And then I started doing a lot of research into Phoenix and where we were on things, being my hometown, and definitely felt that there was a little bit of a gap and that there was a lot that could be done here. We are the fifth-largest and fastest-growing city in the United States. The decisions we make today, and that we have been making and will continue to make, will affect whether we have a city that's livable in 10, 20, 30 years and beyond. So it's really important. I just, I, yeah, I realized that it was way better to be on the side of like the actual decision-maker, as opposed to trying to persuade others to take this issue seriously.
In November 2021, Councilwoman Insari went to Scotland with Phoenix Mayor Kate Gallego, where they represented the city at COP26, a major United Nations climate change conference that attracted the world's most powerful leaders and climate activists, like Joe Biden and Greta Thunberg.
Glasgow must be the kickoff of a decade, a decade of ambition.
I wondered about Phoenix's reputation among people that work on this international climate stage. How has the perception of Phoenix changed? Because I know that in 2011, it was infamously called the least sustainable
Yep.
city in the country.
Yeah, so I think, look, I still think Phoenix has a lot of work to do in terms of our storytelling and our branding about who we are. I think there are some people who still look at Phoenix as like cowboys and hot desert, you know, there's nothing there. I will say that, you know, this year, having Mayor Gallego go to COP26, she's part of something called the C40, which is a coalition of mayors around the world. It's about like 90-some mayors committed to taking bold action on climate change, and includes like the mayor of London, the mayor of Paris, you know, prominent mayors from South America and Africa. And having, you know, the mayor of Phoenix be part of that group attending these events makes a huge difference, because, you know, it puts Phoenix on the map in that sense. And then, you know, I also went, attended a wide variety of things and just talking about Phoenix and what we're doing here, and then taking those lessons back. I think will, will make a big impact, and it's really helpful, because we can learn from other cities as well, and just having those connections makes us a global player.
And you said the, the branding or the storytelling of Phoenix, we need to work on that. What do you see the story of Phoenix as being?
I see the story of Phoenix being, you know, a very, an up-and-coming world-class destination. You know, we have great weather almost all year round. I think we are a hub for innovation when it comes to clean technology. You know, Phoenix is starting to be referred to as Electric Valley, because we have so many EV companies here locally, which is amazing. I think there's just a lot of opportunity here. So even though we are on the front line of climate change, just like many other places around the world, we also can be home to many of the solutions. And I also think it's an amazing place for young people, because you can really help like shape the culture of the city, whether it's like the bars and restaurants downtown or the music scene. If you want to like make something happen in Phoenix, you can do it. And, you know, having lived in places like New York and San Francisco myself, that's not necessarily the case. Those, those cities are kind of like what they are. They're amazing, but they're what they are, whereas Phoenix is still changing and growing with the diverse population that it has.
Yeah, so I wonder if we could back up for a second and do a very basic explanation about what this general problem is, which I understand is carbon going into the atmosphere makes the world hotter. And, you know, depending on what we do now and in the near future, the degree to which the temperature goes up can change dramatically?
Yeah, I'll do my best. It's definitely a challenge. I think for the first piece, when you describe like the carbon emissions and global temperature rise and all of that, I think that in an attempt to make it simple, essentially, there, you know, the majority, the vast majority of scientists across the world who study this issue have shown that since the Industrial Revolution, we can see that global greenhouse gas emissions caused by fossil fuels are increasing our temperature. They usually look at it in Celsius, because most of the world is in Celsius. But basically, since the Industrial Revolution, the global temperature has increased by 1.1 degrees Celsius. We're already with 1.1, seeing extreme weather events across the world, right? We're seeing so many floods, hurricanes, cyclones, extreme heat here in Arizona. What the scientists agree on is that the limit should be 1.5, because after 1.5 is when we start seeing irreversible damage and kind of this tipping point of extreme weather events. The kind of doom and gloom terrifying piece of all of that is that that relies on us reducing our carbon emissions, that relies on national governments setting policies, states, cities, everyone, setting policies that will ensure that we don't get there. Currently, estimates show that we're on track for like anywhere between 2.5 to like 4.7 degrees temperature rise, and this is all by the end of the century, by the way. So it's, it's looking rough, but technology is changing so rapidly, and solutions, our new solutions come about every single day. So I still remain very optimistic that we, 1.5 degrees is still a possibility. You know, in Arizona, it's about the fact that we are breaking record, you know, temperatures every single year. I also frequently talk about air pollution, because, you know, that is a public health crisis, and almost any mom that you talk to in Phoenix, you know, has either a child or a child's friend who's dealing with asthma, and that's not normal. So in my campaign and since I've been in office, these two issues are hugely important to my constituents, and I rarely face anyone, you know, fighting back against the fact that heat or pollution are problems that we face here as Phoenix residents.
And that's why you came to Phoenix in the first place, because your dad had asthma?
Yeah, that's why, you know, the doctor recommended the dry weather.
So that's how it's changed in the past 30 years. This was once a place to come if you had asthma, because it could help.
Right.
But now it's a place where you can get asthma.
Yeah, now the American Lung Association, you know, they're super active here. Phoenix ranks fifth in the country for worst ozone pollution. And then we also are seeing increased asthma levels in children every single year, increased lung cancer rates, premature death, all the rest.
What Insari is describing, the global temperature rise in the past few decades and the possible temperature rise in the future, is often represented by a distinctive line graph. You can find one in the latest report from the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. It shows a steady rising line from around the 1950s to present, but then all these different lines branch out from the point representing today. Some rise for a while, then flatten out, even fall a little, while others continue to rise steeper and steeper. Those different branching lines are different possibilities for the future, different scenarios depending on how much we manage to cut carbon emissions going forward. But I found another graph from the National Weather Service that looks kind of similar to the global graph at first glance, but it hits closer to home. It shows the number of days that are 110 degrees or more each year in Phoenix. It starts in the 1950s, when there were only about seven such days per year. They were rare back then. It rises over the decades, and now in the 2020s, it's over 20 days per year, so it's not so rare anymore. And then it branches out to show different futures of carbon emissions. In the hottest scenario, by 2050, it projects 60 days per year. Summer 2020 was the hottest on record in Phoenix, and it had 53 days of 110 degrees plus. So the average summer in 2050 could be worse than the hottest we've ever seen up until now. And finally, where the graph ends at the end of this century, it projects on the high end, more than 100, over 100 days each year with temperatures of 110 degrees or more. It's one thing to see like, you know, degrees Celsius over average. That seems kind of like abstract or scientific, but then when you think about like number of days here where it's over 110, it's much more relatable and concerning.
Yeah, and I think, you know, going back to how this affects individuals every single day, look at utility bills, look at electricity costs. We're seeing death around the valley, because people are turning off their AC because they simply can't afford it. So, you know, one of the things that I think in terms of solutions that we need to be focused on is just making sure that we scale up some of our existing programs when it comes to energy efficiency, when it comes to weatherization. We need to be working with our utility companies to improve HVAC systems, because these are real life consequences with deadly impacts, and people are frustrated, and rightly so.
So yeah, when it comes to solutions, you've been on city council for a few months now, less than a year, but a few months. What are the solutions, like the really concrete things that you can do from your position that you're most focused on right now?
When it comes to solutions, there's a ton that my team and I have been working on. First and foremost, you know, we passed our Climate Action Plan this year, which was historic. It was the first climate plan that Phoenix has passed. We've set a 2050 carbon neutrality goal, as well as targets in between now and then on how we, on how we get there. Some of the things that I really focused on was our Cool Corridors program, because we know that, you know, again, with heat being one of the number-one threats that we have here in Phoenix, we need to be focused on trees and shade and making sure that we do everything we can to keep temperatures low and also make sure that people can seek relief from heat. So originally, the goal in the plan was to have 30 miles of these cool corridors by 2030, but we really pushed strongly to make that 100 miles and really focus on some of the historically disinvested populations. So, you know, District 7, District 8, District 5.
And the cool corridors are pathways with lots of greenery and trees along them?
Yeah, just significant tree and shade canopy, and then in places where that doesn't work, more like built structures of shade. So that will be significant. We, I also am very much focused on, you know, transportation is the biggest source of greenhouse gas emissions and pollution in Phoenix. It's about 50%, which is crazy, because worldwide, it's only about 16%. So it just shows that Phoenix is so car-centric, so we have to do whatever we can to make electric vehicles more affordable and accessible. So I'm chairing the mayor's ad hoc committee on electric vehicles, where we have a group of 14 experts building a roadmap that will hopefully come out by spring of 2022, that will have recommendations around policies and programs, both around charging infrastructure to make it easier for folks to drive EVs, but also around like rebate programs or just programs. programs to make sure that new apartment building complexes, shopping complexes, workplaces, all the rest have have charging infrastructure. But ultimately, you know, I would love to be less of a car centric city. I've been advocating a lot for free public transit. You know, I think it's a bold idea, but there are places looking into this. We are already significantly investing in our light rail system. That's in my district going along South Central, all electric. We also, hopefully during my tenure, will be able to start the process in the West Valley for light rail. But then we also have to make our communities more walkable, more bikeable. We see so many deaths from from, you know, pedestrian or bikers getting hit. So working on those initiatives and then I think just continuing to work on tree and and shade equity is an important one for my district. I want to make sure places like South Phoenix and Maryville are not left behind.
Last episode, we followed Gretchen Reinhardt from the historically disinvested Escalante neighborhood in Tempe. She's been committed to making her community a cooler and greener place for 25 years, but it's been a struggle. Planting trees around the neighborhood took what seemed to me to be a heroic effort, dealing with city officials, private homeowners and school administrators. She jumped through all the hoops eventually, but this apparently does not always happen across the valley. The city of Phoenix set a goal in 2010 to have 25% tree canopy cover across the city by 2030. In April 2021, over halfway to the deadline, the city announced it was not nearly on track to meet its goal. It needed to plant 10,000 trees a year to meet it and in 2019, the city's tree total grew by just 3,300. So it really needs to pick up the pace. The thing is, planting trees, unlike so much of what the government deals with, is not particularly controversial. A city of Phoenix poll found that over 70% of people want trees and would even be willing to pay more in taxes every year in order to help the city reach its goal. So why is it so hard to plant trees? And how do you see that hopefully changing soon?
Well, I think up until recently, one of the issues that is not unique to Phoenix, but really any government is there's often a lot of plans and a lot of great policies put forward. But if you want to actually achieve them, you have to put real staff and and money behind it. I think that the political will is very much there now to make it happen. If you looked at this past year's budget at the city of Phoenix, we actually invested $2.8 million in a new Office of Heat Response and Mitigation. So we have this awesome new individual named Dr. David Honsula, whose job it is to make sure that things like the Tree and Shade Master Plan at the city of Phoenix are actually implemented. So he's actually now in the process of hiring a Tree and Shade Administrator for the city, whose job it will be to make sure that we stay on track. Again, up until recently, like, we haven't, we hadn't seen as much public support for these climate solutions at things like the city budget hearings. But this past year, you know, it increased significantly. It was like one of the top three issues that people called in about and said like, we want you guys to actually make this happen. So I I think things are changing and we will make sure that these plans are implemented.
Sometimes we tend to think of people dedicated to climate change as nature lovers or, as they've been pejoratively called in the past, tree huggers. That really doesn't describe Ansari's path to climate work. She started with a mission to help refugees, people forced to flee from their home against their will. And she concluded, under the guidance of a UN mentor, that working on climate change was a good way to prevent people from having to face catastrophic conflict. When it comes to what happened in Syria, there is some controversy about just how big a factor drought was in the conflict. It was one of many factors, as Ansari said, but that's far from the only example of climate migration. According to a United Nations university report from 2020, several million migrants have already identified environmental degradation and climate change as the main reasons for their decision to leave home. And on the next episode of Inhospitable, we'll hear from a fifth generation Arizona farmer who's having to face the possibility of leaving the state because of how the environment is changing. So for now, Ansari and others are dedicated to proving the Phoenix data is wrong, to keeping Phoenix as the place that draws people in instead of pushing them out. It's no small task for the hottest city in a warming America. That guy who declared Phoenix the world's least sustainable city a decade ago, Andrew Ross, doubled down on that claim in 2018. He warned in an interview with The Guardian of eco-apartheid, where the poor get poorer and the rich get richer in an increasingly hostile natural environment. To prove him wrong and prevent the climate from exacerbating inequality, government, businesses, nonprofits, and individual citizens have to think about people like Michael, who we heard from at the start of the episode.
There's been times where it's been so hot, I was sweating so bad, it was like I was standing in a shower, but it was just the sweat wringing off of me. I mean, it's hard to find a piece of shade where you can sit and relax for a minute and kind of cool off.
The city of Phoenix's Climate Action Plan calls for tree equity, which means they'll plant more trees in the less shaded parts of town. They want 25% tree coverage by 2030 and right now, the census tract where I met Michael has just 4% tree coverage. One of the planned cool corridors Ansari was talking about is a walkway shaded by trees near the library, just a few blocks from Justice Center, the Cooling Centers for Seniors Experiencing Homelessness, where I met Michael. That walkway would be nice for him. He loves to read. But the Climate Action Plan is a little abstract, some of it decades down the line. But there is immediate action happening too, though. In the summer of 2021, the Phoenix City Council allocated $1 million of the city's federal COVID relief funding to Justice Center. And with that money, they're planning to open two new Justice Center facilities in different parts of Phoenix and add the ability to provide services in Spanish. For an older person stuck outside on the 180 degree summer asphalt, those air conditioned Justice Centers can be a lifesaver.
What's so compelling about the climate issue is that it touches all aspects of our lives and it's our responsibility as elected officials to make it easier for people to get through their everyday lives. So anything from, you know, making sure there's cooling centers that are accessible to all folks, especially unsheltered individuals in the summertime. And I do think that this is increasingly a very bipartisan issue. You know, climate change doesn't discriminate between Republicans and Democrats. I'm working on making sure that the city of Phoenix itself doesn't invest in more fossil fuel powered vehicles. And we actually like, when we're replacing our own city fleet, we try to buy electric. And I even, you know, we even had support for that from Republican Council Member Sal De Sicio. So this is a bipartisan issue. I hope that people will call into council meetings and and get involved because there's a lot to do and we really need everyone.
Thank you so much for listening. And to be sure you don't miss our future episodes, subscribe to this podcast wherever you listen. And if this episode sparked your curiosity or inspired you to take action yourself, you can find more information on the organizations we profiled and the issues they face on our website, heararizona.org. That's H E A R Arizona. There you can also find our other podcast series on the most pressing challenges our state faces, like homelessness, aging, and funding for the arts. One of the best ways to support our community based solutions journalism is to tell your friends about it. They can search for Here Arizona on their favorite podcast listening app, Apple Podcasts, Stitcher, NPR1, Spotify. And since we're all about empowering our community, we want you to be a part of the conversation. Follow Here Arizona on Facebook, Twitter, or Instagram. Here Arizona is a production of the Division of Public Service at Rio Solado College, which includes Sun Sounds, SPOT 127, KBOC, and KJZZ. This episode was reported, written, produced, scored, and hosted by me, Anthony Wallace. Linda Pastore is our executive producer.